Tuesday, May 24th, please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Alan Eldridge, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious and loving Heavenly Father, how would be your great and wonderful name? We thank you for the day that you've given to us, and you have told us that we need to rejoice and be glad in it, and help us to use this day in a way that will glorify you. Father, I pray that you will be with this city council. I'm thankful for each member of the council. I pray that you will bless them with vision, with wisdom, with courage, as they lead our city. And we thank you for everything that they do, and we're thankful, Father, for everyone who contributes to the ongoing of the City of Mobile. Bless them and be with them. We especially want to pray for Councilman Small and his sister, that your healing power will continue to be at work in his life. Please watch over him and bless him, and we pray that they will be able to get back to our city safely in time. Thank you, Father, for being there for us at all times. We love you and we thank you for loving us. Guide us throughout the rest of this day and this meeting. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please remain standing. We all know about our friend and colleague CJ Small, who is in Africa, and he has been wounded by an ambush over the weekend. So I would ask you all, if you would, please just bow your heads in silent prayer for CJ and his sister, and for safe recovery and return back home, please.
Roll call, President Gregory.
Here.
Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Small. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're still trying to get used to our new temporary quarters here, as the county makes some improvements over in the auditorium, which I'm sure will be much appreciated by all of us when it gets done. We have mentioned our friend and colleague CJ Small, who is not with us today, and we're all wearing these white ribbons, if you would notice. This is in honor of CJ, and we will wear these until he gets back home safe and sound. And so if you would like to get one, please see our council staff over here from the clerk's office, and they will make one available to you. I want to provide the latest on Mr. Small. As you all know, of course, he was shot in the face over the weekend in Johannesburg, South Africa, and this was during an ambush and robbery of a tour bus that he was riding on. Then, following the incident, he was taken to a hospital for treatment with the cooperation and assistance of many, many friends and supporters, both in Johannesburg and here in Alabama. CJ was transported to a private hospital, and he's receiving the best of care as he awaits the opportunity to return home. He is in stable condition, and of course, our thoughts and our prayers are with him and his family. In the interim, the council office is working together to be sure that any needs and concerns of Mr. Small's constituents in District Three are met. We have distributed information about the incident to the media, and also with contact information for councilmembers Richardson and Manzi, who have stepped up to take any phone calls and emails that come in from constituents in Mr. Small's district. So, thank you to everybody for what you have done. Thanks to Levon and Fred for their offer to take these phone calls, and of course, our council staff as well, for all of your help, and Lisa, and just everyone who has come forward. There has been a tremendous outpouring of support for CJ in the area, and we really appreciate that. As we get updates, you know, we will share what we can, but primarily the information on CJ's care, and any updates are coming from his family attorney, and that is Raymond Bell, and I believe all of the media has his contact information as well. On today's agenda, we will be considering some more facility upgrades throughout the city, including two dog parks. I know that's something that everybody is interested in, more doggy parks. Also, the Bolton Branch Creek Channel drainage improvements are on the agenda to be voted on today. We also will be looking at a Transportation Enhancement Program grant for the Bitten Spur area. That's in Mr. Dave's district with a city match that will be paid for by the Village of Spring Hill. The Memorial Day weekend is ahead. Yay, we have a holiday! But the other news we need to tell everybody is that the garbage and trash routes will be running, as usual. We always get a lot of phone calls when there's a holiday, especially a Monday holiday, so we want to make sure that everybody understands that all of our garbage and trash routes will be running as normal. This afternoon, we will have a Finance Committee meeting at 2:00, and we are in the middle of all of our capital improvement program planning, and so that's what we will be looking at today, continuing to look at the areas where the money will be funded, putting some finishing touches on that. So again, that's at 2:00, upstairs on the ninth floor. And a reminder, tomorrow is the Annual State of the City and County, sponsored by The Chamber, where you'll have updates from Mayor Stimson, from Jerry Carl over at the County Commission, as well as from The Chamber on everything we have done this year, all of our successes, and where we are going in the future. This is an annual event, something that we all look forward to, and that's at the convention center tomorrow, and it begins at noon. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lambert.
Approval of minutes of May 17th. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
May I ask the Coast Guard Representatives, Coast Guard Auxiliary, please join. This morning, it's my honor to present a certificate of appreciation to the Coast Guard Auxiliary, and the certificate of appreciation reads, "The U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary is hereby officially claimed and recognized for their support for National Safe Boating Week in the City of Mobile, Alabama, done on this 24th day of May in the year of 2016."
Officially proclaimed by Mayor William S. Stimson, 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile. I think it's appropriate that this is a national boating week, because being Memorial Day weekend, it's everybody's starting to get out in their boats, and they need to make sure they're safe, so Bill, would you like to make a few comments, please?
Oh, please, thank you. Yep. National Safe Boating Week actually was developed by the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary long ago, and it was recognized by President Eisenhower, 1957, and has been a strong boating safety program, which is featured the week prior to Memorial Day, which is the traditional start of the boating season for most of the country. What the Coast Guard Auxiliary and Coast Guard units in the area are involved in is such things as exhibits, some special programs, media coverage. They're out there, we're out there spreading the boating safety message and encouraging boaters to become educated and to help save lives. There's a central theme to the National Safe Boating Week, which is, in this poster over here, it's "Wear It." There's a reason behind that, because the occasional boaters are most likely to have accidents, and the statistics are very sad, that 71% of all the fatalities on the water are drownings. And of that 71%, 85% of the individuals were not wearing life jackets. So over and over again, this will be the constant theme, put that life jacket on. So some of the activities that you'll see throughout the rest of this week, and actually throughout the year, the Auxiliary will be providing vessel safety checks, those are free. You can go on the Internet and request one, and we'll come to your house or go to the boat ramps. We're going to have boating safety exhibits at some of the sporting goods and marine places. We're actually providing water safety presentations to school kids in different environments that they're at. And also, we conduct the boating safety classes that allow the individuals to get their Alabama voter's license. But these type of activities are going on nationwide, at Coast Guard flotillas and Coast Guard units. So again, the number-one message about this day in National Safe Boating Week is be safe on the water and wear it. Mayor, thank you.
May I ask Officer Demetrius Watts, please join. This is our Officer of the Month. Officer Watts. Officer Demetrius Watts has rendered a service to the City of Mobile, which deserves special recognition. During the month of April, Officer Watts serviced 130 calls, 21 backings, six felony arrests, 30 misdemeanor arrests, and five tickets. Specifically, on Friday, the 29th of April, Officer Watts responded to the American Inn for the report of a burglary of an iPad and two iPhones. The victims had left their door latch open, and thieves went into the room of the Jameson Inn and removed the items. Officer Watts responded to the scene of the offense and took the report. Some officers would have stopped there, but Officer Watts spoke to witnesses and was able to hone in on the location of the suspects. Officer Watts conducted a knock-and-talk and found source subjects, four subjects, all of whom were complicit in the burglary. Officer Watts was able to return the stolen property to the victims and also charged the subjects with possession of marijuana and criminal trespassing. His efforts resulted in four felonies and six demeanors being leveled against these suspects. The next day, Officer Watts was dispatched to the O'Shea Road in reference to an escort involving a domestic dispute. The complainant advised that her items had been taken by her boyfriend. Officer Watts went to the boyfriend's workplace and found the suspect. The items were not in his possession, but a database search also revealed that he had eight misdemeanor warrants for failing to appear on traffic offenses, and several domestic violence warrants. Officer Watts, once again, went to extra distance and thoroughly worked a call and cleared out several active warrants. He strives every day that he is on duty to make the City of Mobile the safest in America. He has keen observation skills and dedication to duty that allows him to make substantial arrests for the month of April 2016. As described above, Officer Watts is prudent in his efforts to rid the City of Mobile of the criminal element. His initiative, enthusiasm, and excellence in his overall performance show a proactive police style, and is a tremendous asset to the City of Mobile. Now, therefore, on behalf of all the citizens, we are pleased to award the certificate of recognition to him as Officer of the Month for April 2016 with our sincerest thanks. Thank you very much, Officer.
Other remarks include, just pointing out that Mobile Botanical Gardens has already begun $150,000 transformational makeover this year through funds from the city capital improvement projects. These include upgrades to parking, drainage, electrical fencing, and new pedestrian walkways. Eventually, it'll showcase 100 acres of gardens, trails, and forests that have been a fixture for our community for more than 40 years. We have a dedicated group of individuals that work diligently to try to make sure that botanical gardens are something that visitors will want to see, and it's already a jewel in our community, but it certainly will be better once we complete these renovations. Two new dog parks, and everybody thinks dog parks are for dogs. They're really not for dogs. They're for people and their dogs. And I'm reminded that, having been in office, matter of fact, I wasn't even in office. I was running for office, and the mayor of St. Petersburg, who had been a new mayor several years previously, said the single thing that they did in St. Petersburg to draw their community together so that neighbors became aware of who their neighbors were, was putting in dog parks. He said, "For the dollar spent, there is nothing that you can spend money on that gets a greater return for creating a community than building a dog park." The two dog parks that are being built, one of them is at Public Safety Memorial Park. It's being built with money that was left over when we completed the skating park. So that's a huge thing to have, a park with both of those amenities in it. So we're excited about that, but in Crawford Park, the money for that was raised by citizens who decided they wanted to have a park there, and they started doing fundraisers and went out and raised the money themselves, so that's a huge bonus. Plus, there's some match from the city, I think. Is that correct also?
Yes, sir.
There's a match. There's a match, but if it had not been for the citizens.
That's right. That's right.
That were interested in it, it's one of those things that probably would not have happened in our community. So we're grateful to see that happening. The trip to Cuba, that's my first trip to Cuba. I went with, I'm not sure what you, how to frame the expectations, but I knew that my parents had spent their honeymoon there, and I believe I was actually went to the hotel where they spent their honeymoon. But it's a city of contrast in this regard, that what you see in these buildings, they are magnificent buildings that have been allowed to deteriorate, being unpainted and so forth, which in one regard is kind of heartbreaking, but you do start, you're starting to see some restoration going on, and those that are being restored are absolutely spectacular. And the purpose of our trip was to build relationships with government officials to make sure that we're interested in continuing the educational exchanges, cultural exchanges, and to the degree that we can do so within the bounds of the current law in the United States, to increase our trade through the port of Mobile with Cuba. There's a lot of money that's being invested in Cuba right now. We visited a container port where the Brazilian government and maybe a private company had put $1.5 billion in a container port. It's certainly state-of-the-art. They are making that investment, thinking that they will get some of the post-Panamax container trade. So there are other people that are investing there, but the government officials were very interested in making sure that the delegation from Mobile understood that they needed assistance in trying to convince our United States Congress to relax the, you know, the trade agreements so that we could resume normal trade. So anyway, all in all, it was a very interesting trip. I'm glad I went. I would go back. I don't know if you would say you'd find this amusing or not, but in the hotel where we were staying, which was a very nice hotel, there were eight of us, and there was somebody in room 240, 340, 440, 540, 640, and I'm thinking, why did they stack us all up in there like that? But I'll let you surmise why they did that. But anyway, we left our computers at home. I left my computer home and my cellphone, and you can live without both of them if you just try, or if you're worried about somebody tapping into it. So anyway, all in all, really, a great trip. The future for the port of Mobile and the City of Mobile, I think, is very bright, assuming the Cuban government and the United States government can work out, you know, trade agreements. I want to echo what Council President Gregory said about Councilman Small, about us praying for his full and complete recovery, and so I just encourage everybody to do that. So thank you very much.
And we asked the mayor earlier if he partook in any of the Cuban, I guess, not amenities, but things known in Cuba, which would be the rum, and of course, cigars, and that sort of thing, and he admitted to at least one, I think.
Well, what I've told her.
Or at least what he told me about, right.
I said that I did not smoke any cigars, but I brought some home for somebody that may smoke them, but I saw somebody down there smoking them that was on the trip, but I won't reveal that. And I said, you know, when you try to bring, when you try to bring the spirits home in your suitcase, be careful, because they do break, and so what I tried to bring home is now in all my clothes. Anyway, things like that happen.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Monthly finance report.
I don't see Paul here. We have a Finance Committee meeting this afternoon, so I guess we'll just postpone any of those discussions until 2:00.
Madam President, I just wondered if the administration would, was that the plan that not to do it today?
I don't know.
Or was it just so, this monthly finance?
Monthly finance.
That was scheduled before, while I was in Cuba, so I do not know. And Paul is not here, but I know he's coming back.
Yeah. This is just the normal monthly.
Yeah.
Finance report today, so.
But I do think that there's some specific things that have been asked that he's trying to address about capital monies, and I think that it also is going to address some of the capital improvement programs.
Right, well, that's what the meeting this afternoon is about. What we do today is just a normal monthly finance report, and I just saw that Paul was not here.
Yeah, so he will do that, definitely.
Okay, we'll just get that this afternoon.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on June 3rd on Costa Rides Street, May 29th on Colonial Court, May 29th, North Block of Macy Place between Dolphin Street and Monterey Place, July 4th on Glenwood Street, June 4th on Hillcrest Road, July 2nd on Burtonwood Drive, and May 28th on Taylor Place.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion on these appeals?
Yes, Madam President.
I didn't call that one yet. I'm going to call it separate.
Thank you.
All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Request for wave of the noise ordinance on July 4th on Charles Street.
Request that we, I move that we would table this item for a period of two weeks.
Second.
Is there time to table it for two weeks? What's the date on it?
July the 4th.
It's going to be.
Yeah, you'll have two weeks.
Or the 6/4/026, when we get to that one, that's when we get, it's.
No, 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 this is a, this is a noise.
Oh, no, oh, a noise order, okay.
Yeah, so we're just going to hold it over for two weeks.
Yeah, for two weeks, and that still gives them time, because it's not until July. Okay.
What's that date, just so that we know the date in two weeks? Do we have that? I'm sorry. I guess I could look. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Did they vote? Vote. Vote.
Oh, all in favor, laying it over two weeks. Opposed? Okay.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to accept public comments on the proposed sidewalk plan for Bitten Spur Road and a TAP program grant application.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, you can please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. At the end of four minutes, you'll hear the buzzer, which means that you need to go ahead and wrap it up. So anyone in the audience like to speak to this? All right, thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider amendments and adoption of the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code.
All right, again, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this, please come to the podium. Okay, public hearing, up. Okay, Elizabeth?
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. You don't have to sign in.
I just want to commend Jeff and the team and the administration and y'all for continuing to push on blight. As you'll see on this document, I just happen to be rereading the survey that we did yesterday. I didn't know this was on the agenda, but, and in this survey, comment after comment after comment was all about blight, and as Jeff mentioned, you need lots of different tools, and I just want to commend you for continuing to push on this, and I know it's sometimes hard and politically difficult, but it is very important for maintaining property values in a neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Please come to the podium. All right, public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to amend Chapter 64.3.1 of the Mobile City Code Downtown Development District.
Again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak to this particular code for downtown development district, please come to the podium. Elizabeth, you going to speak to this one?
So today's a bit of an anniversary for me. On May 29th, 1990, I was introduced to this council on my first day on the job, and I've been working on downtown Mobile for, ever since, and it's been a great pleasure. I spent 15 years with the city, and then the last 10 or so with the Downtown Alliance. During that time, nobody has ever said to me, "Let's just keep it just like it is. Let's don't do anything. Let's don't push. Let's don't create a new vision." Nobody's said that. People have continuously said to, "Let's chart a vision for rebuilding this downtown as a walkable, vibrant place that is welcoming to all and that we can be proud of as we move forward." And so, the Downtown Development Code that we've worked on over the last few years is a response to kind of codifying some of the things in the new plan that was done in the mid-aughts, if you will, and it's been an important part towards moving our city towards that higher level of vision. Walkability is more than just sidewalks. It's about how we build our city back, and every detail that's in this code is based on extensive research that people do on human beings and how they think about their city. And so, this revision, we told you at the time that let's get it adopted, but it's not going to be a static document. It's going to be a living document, and it's going to, and we want to constantly update it, learn from our experiences. So this has been going on for about two years now, learned from it. We're adding some sections on existing buildings, tweaking some things, and also moving forward in the example of the C Streets, where our city is now, has a new vision for Water Street, and a new vision for Broad Street, and a new vision for Beauregard, and bringing those streets into this new town. So thank you for your support of it in the past, and look forward to working with you at the committee level, et cetera.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to amend Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code to eliminate conflict between the off-street parking requirements and the Downtown Development District Code and describe exempted areas.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? The Downtown Development District Code exempted areas for parking? All right. Public, Elizabeth, you going to speak to this, too? Come on. All right. No, 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 I think that's, yeah, all right. Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezone property at 300 North Water Street and 305 Del Shamps Drive, southeast corner of Adams Street and North Water Street, extending to the northwest corner of Congress Street and Del Shamps Drive from I-1 to B-4.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning? All right, public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. At this time, we have, oh, Rosalyn Jones, Ms. Rosalyn Jones from Lafayette Heights.
Malone.
I think she's saying her name is Malone. Oh, Malone.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, sorry. I apologize.
Good evening or morning, whichever the case may be. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be a citizen of the United States of America. And I'm glad to know it's the government, all the people, and for the people. I'm a senior citizen. I live across the street from Thomas Sullivan Center, and I got familiar with it in 2002. My mother had a stroke, she was paralyzed on her left side. Had not it been for the Thomas Sullivan Center, I don't know what I've done, because I was her cag yellow given, and I appreciate it, and it was neat for, to have a nutritious meal be brought to our house, because I was not able to leave her alone. She couldn't talk. So it's just a beacon of hope for us, and now the sale program, it seems like, has got a snag. I don't know what's happening, but I hope it can be resolved, because the people who are working there have been there over 17 years, and I don't see why a problem could not be resolved in 17 years, so now they are feeding us food that we can't eat. I'm a senior citizen. I have, I can't have salt. I'm on a salt-free diet, and they're bringing us salt, potato chips. I can't have potatoes. I can't drink. I can't. And they're bringing us salt, potato chips. I can't have potatoes. I can't drink. I can't drink, uh, apple, apple juice. I can't have that kind of stuff. At my age and medication that I take, but now I can get a nutritious meal at the Thomas Sullivan Center. And what they are saying is, we have, they like, they like, they like, they like that a brick wall. We either accept what they do, or they're getting rid of our staff here, who have been there so efficiently working with us. On, on Fridays, our schedule is to get a pedicure and manicure. I cannot go, I cannot afford to go to the salon to get that. But she, our center, Mary Williams, gives that to us free. She supplies the, the, all the stuff we need, and gives us the pedicure for free. She is also instrumental and teaches us how to play bingo. Now, I don't know yet how to do it, but I plan to, but she teaches us that, and she brings gifts out of her own money. So if we win, we get a little prize. And, and then she gives us nutritious meat, they serve us nutritious meal there. This been going on as long as over, I know two thousand, two thousand and two, when my mother was sick. And it's been going on ever since. And I cannot understand why it cannot continue as it was. Now, I hear about all these by dogs and things and all this, but why can't some of that be, you know, we center city, we votes in this, I've been, I worked in the city for thirty years in Mobile Public Library. And I don't see why something can't be satisfied for senior citizen, like they're trying to kick us to the curb. Or something, I don't know what the problem is, but I feel like any problem can be resolved with enough initiative and concern. So I know I'm a concerned citizen. Concerned citizen. I've been voting, I've never been able to vote, lied to vote, and I still vote. And I'm still in my right mind, thank Lord. So I just think, if we reconsider and consider us all the people, we are here. We are in a place, we go, whether we get nutrition food, we can also get spiritually fed by having Bible study classes. We do that too. I know, because I'm a part of it. And it's really educational. Right now, Lord willing, May thirty first, I'll be teaching a class in Master of Advanced Christian Education. Because at the center, they, they have a computer, and I can help to use that computer and work it out my programs. And I'm trying to know how to use email. All this is instrumented through Mary Williams at our center. Mary, whatever, Mary, Mary Brown, Mary Brown, sorry, Mary Brown. And she does that, because she love us, she care for us, and it gives us motivation to get up in the mornings, since I'm very tired. It gives me motivation to get up, come to the center, across the street. Because I know it's a lot of things going on. We have, we have sewing classes going on and everything. All kind of things, you know, we do that. So I certainly hope they can reconsider this to the, and not just, like we else. I don't know what the cost. Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, Mr. Richardson has a question. Ms. Malone?
Yes, I'm Ms. Malone.
Oh, you're Ms. Malone. Sorry.
She's Ms. Lewis.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, Mr. Richardson has a question.
Ms. Jones, what?
There's the joint.
What, what is happening, what is not happening that you want to happen?
I would like to see you have a bus, take us to other centers.
You want a bus?
Fellowship, a good fellowship.
Okay.
And we have a good group there. We fellowship with each other, and they have, it's like a family, you know, our each family to us, we are like a family to each other.
Okay, you.
So I would like to have a bus, and I'd like to have a, a, you know, a, a nutrition meal each night, and I would like, um.
Are, are you saying that you're not getting a nutritious meal?
I can't eat strawberry, and I can't eat, and what they're giving out, I can't eat. I ate strawberry, I had to go to the doctor, my pressure was, I don't have it.
So, so the, but the change in the food has been recent, or has this always been the fact?
It took about three weeks, yes.
Oh, okay.
But prior to that, I was just as helpless.
Okay.
I still forget that, thank Lord. But, the food that's certain, now, I cannot eat it.
Okay.
I cannot eat that with my age and everything and my medication.
Okay.
And a lot of us can't eat it. Now, back home, we all senior citizens, and I sent it away after my eighties. And these other citizens are physically, they're up there too. And certain things we just cannot eat, and it's a whole thing.
Okay.
I appreciate strawberry, it's just I can't have, you know, this against my health. And I would have to go to the doctor and say, your pressure low, your arteries up, so you know, I mean, I just couldn't handle that, you know, so.
Okay.
And I thank y'all, wish y'all, we just need a bus, so we could go to other centers and, and you know, last year, we went to Hillsdale Heights, they had a little, they put on a little volleyball thing, and we was in the just, I like to be a just, I'm like to just, you know, skirt. And see, we know that centers there, we got something to get up and strive to go to. You know, probably know what's gonna happen. There are a lot of things going on there, you don't know about. But there's a lot of things going on there, very education and everything.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rosalyn Fairgood Malone, and I'm also a member of the Thomas Sullivan Seniors Program. I stood before you four weeks ago and made a plea for help for our center. The problem is, we are not getting meals like we used to. We don't have transportation to get to the center or get back home. We have to get there the best way we can, and some of us don't thrive. We are not getting a nutritious meal. And my reason for standing here today is to ask the city council, please consider, reconsider the proposals that have been brought before you. I received a letter from you guys on the twenty-third of May, and it guaranteed one hundred percent that you guys were gonna be staying behind us. Nothing, absolutely nothing has changed. I've talked with Matthew Capes a couple of times, no effort on his part to fix the situation. I don't know what the problem is, but I'm quite sure y'all do. And we are asking, please, do not move Mary Brown. She is the heartbeat, the very heartbeat of the Sullivan Center. I was born and raised in this community, and she has built that center from the ground up. My children went through that center. They would play football through that center. I have a son that coaches football at that center. We need Thomas Sullivan Center in our community. It just seems like in our community, everything's being closed and taken away from us. I stand before you, I, I don't, I don't agree with the way things are going. I don't agree with a proposal that we switch supervisors, no. I don't think that'll fix anything. It's not gonna fix anything. It's not gonna fix the sale program. It's not gonna bring nutritious meals. That's our point. Change in staff is not gonna be a result to, to figure this out. God bless you, and I thank you.
All right, thank you. I think Mr. Manzi wants to, um, address some of this.
Yes, uh, I first wanna, wanna thank you, uh, for coming, you and Ms. Jones for coming out, and, and all of the, uh, citizens from the Lafayette Heights community. Mr. Mayor, they came to a council meeting about three or four weeks ago. I believe you, you might have been out of town then. And at that time, uh, Kobe Cooper, our, our chief of staff, made some assurances that some things would happen, and, and I believe that those things are still in the making as far as, as what he's related to me as late as yesterday. So I, I understand that the meals haven't been comparable to what, uh, you all were receiving previously, but they're, they're in the process of training a staff member who can take the program and move it forward. And I think at that time, when y'all came, they said that it'd take about three to four weeks for that to happen.
Yes.
Uh, and so.
But it hasn't. It has not happened. Nobody's been hired, nobody's been trained, nothing has been done.
So, uh, is, is there someone here, Mr. Mayor, that might could give us an update on that?
Matthew Caps came and spoke to him before the meeting, uh, and he left, uh, but there are things in process. Maybe it hasn't gotten to the point where the meals are being, uh, delivered at this point, but it is not something that's been ignored.
Four weeks, that's ignoring us, Mayor.
Mayor.
Four weeks, in my book, that's ignoring us.
I understand, I understand your concern.
And that's the way we feel. Like Ms. Jones said, we all register voters. And it wouldn't matter to me if you run a dog catcher, I'm gonna vote for it, because I have that right. I am somebody, and I have a voice and I have a right to be heard. The, the situation that Matthew Capes is suggesting, that's not gonna help anything. Switch supervisors for what? That was not the problem. The problem was, we don't have a driver, we don't get hot meals. That's the situation we've, we've come to, thought we've thought. Not to be changing Ms. Brown or whatever lady name is, is there. That is not a solution, Mr. Mayor. Especially for my community. The children, the adults, everybody love there.
Yeah, Ms. Malone, we, we appreciate your, your concerns.
You don't roll the buzz on me.
Uh, I think you may have to, uh, meet with maybe Mr. Manzi and Mr. Caps kind of on the side to go over some of these things so that you all will know exactly what is going on, because these are some administrative moves, as I have been, uh, has been explained to me, and trying to make sure that the sale program continues. I mean, I think that's the greatest concern, is making sure that the sale program continues. And so, again, as I understand it, some changes are going to have to be made to ensure that the sale program continues. Now, what those changes are is not something that this council oversees.
I know.
But I'm gonna let Mr. Manzi, you know, address that with you, if, if you want to add to it.
Essentially, I'm gonna say the same thing that, uh, Madam President just said, that from an administrative standpoint, relative to what personnel is at what center, that in a role that we play, but the, the most paramount thing for me, uh, as your council representative, is to make certain that that meal, those meals that you're accustomed to are there. I think that's the number one goal that we want to try to reach.
Yes.
Uh, one of the things that was offered a few weeks ago was maybe that a bus could come to the center and take them to another sales site where they could get a nutritious meal. Is that something that could, could be, well, I'm asking you, is that something that could be?
I don't know without checking with Matthew. I know that was something we discussed early on, and so I don't know what the update is.
Yes, sir. Uh, well, well, allow us to get all those, those answers, uh, Ms. Malone, and I'll be certain to, uh, if necessary, we'll come to the center
Please do.
and meet with the seniors and, and give y'all update on where we are.
I appreciate your patience.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Irene Anton?
Good morning, everybody. Irene Anton, twenty-two oh two Clinton Street. It's on the agenda, I don't know which one it is, it's about the park, city parks and all of that. Okay. Uh, information was in the agenda about the improvement of the park, parks. And I have been talking about Figures Park, the tennis courts, and so forth. And I brought a picture once with this big old hole and the screen that, that goes around the whole park. So when I brought it up and we talked about it, then somebody went out there, and it's a nice screen around the park. They say they could not fix the park because it was sinking. But Mrs. Pete was gonna build a art center there. Well, the ground's supposed to be still sinking, so now, I've talked to her, they're not gonna build it, because you got what you need right there in LaFlore High School. So I brought this activity sheet that you get from the city that tells what's in all of the different areas. And then it had tennis at Davidson, tennis at, at Lounges and different places. And then, when you get to the high schools, they say that LaFlore, Murphy have a lighted court, LaFlore have lighted courts, David have, Davidson have lighted courts, school courts are for the public use after four P M. Okay, I talked to Mr. Shelton with maintenance, and he said all it need to be done, the grass cutting and reline, so the gr- the ground is not sinking. So, I hope that we will look into that. Thank you.
Ms. Anton?
Mr. Richardson, go ahead.
What, what, yeah, yeah, because I'm, I'm, I'm getting conflicted information regarding that tennis court. Who told you that the court is all right to play on?
Oh, Mr. Shelton, he's with the Mobile, uh, school board.
Oh, Tommy Shelton.
Yeah, he does property.
Oh, the school board.
With the school board.
Yeah, he was right out, he was right out here when I was talking about it.
Oh, oh, I, I thought maybe that was someone at the city.
Oh, no.
The city, the city's gonna have to say something about that. It's the city, it's that.
Yeah, the city's property. Because this is LaFlore, this is a field, and this is the city. But when LaFlore had the tennis courts, I mean, when they had the tennis, they were played on their courts.
Okay, Ms. Anton, this is what I'm saying. The school board is telling you, someone from the school board is telling you that, that the tennis court is just fine.
Right.
The city, I, uh, the report I got from the city that it is not, so we got to resolve the two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's, we got to figure out what's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Anton.
Linda St. John with the Village of Spring Hill.
We talked about an anniversary earlier with Elizabeth, and also planning and vision, walkability. These are all some key words that I think have really grown, uh, around our city. So this is Linda St. John. I think most of us, uh, recognize Linda. She is coming to give us a presentation on ten years, um, of work that this community group has been doing for our city. And, um, Joel and I were able to see this a little earlier, and it's really amazing, because you forget how bad it was until you see the before and after pictures. So, uh, Linda is going to, um, talk us through some of that, and Carolyn and I know is.
We're gonna project this on the wall, so some of you that, uh, some of you may wanna leave, but others that will and wanna stay can just move over to the other side so that you can see it.
We probably need to turn these lights down too, if y'all know where the lights are.
Yeah, we got.
I just want to say while she's doing that, that this is ten year, ten year anniversary, and I've been president for ten years, not because I want to be, because no one else wants to be, probably. Um, I've been doing a lot of presentations before the council, early on, in the early days, and I know Lisa Lambert will attest to this. I have never, ever, ever used all of my allotted time, ever, ever.
Can y'all find that light right there?
So, we're gonna cash in a little bit today and, um, and use some of the time that we haven't used. Before we start, I, I really just want to thank the council and the administration for supporting our efforts.
That's emergency light.
And hopefully, we can continue, you know, working together to maybe get another ten years of improvements.
Ten years ago, a group of concerned citizens held a community meeting at Spring Hill College attended by over five hundred people. Everyone there was concerned about the deteriorated state of our commercial areas. There seemed to be a lack of planning and no vision for the future. Overwhelmingly, the consensus was that we all wanted.
Well, the microphone is attached. I'm explaining on the screen, it worked. I'll have it run through.
Ten years ago, a group of concerned, ten years ago, ten years ago, a group of.
Like we said, it was ten years ago.
Let's see, look, it doesn't look like the video is, is showing her screensaver, but it is not showing the video, but I feel.
Hey, John? Stroke, can you help? And maybe we can find somebody to turn up that light.
It's going.
You gotta see the pictures. You gotta see.
Just wanna have a look at it.
We, uh, transfer about four thousand dollars a day.
Ah, there it is.
Magic touch. Look, watch it up here, watch it up here.
Watch the mark. It was moving, which.
Concerned citizens held a community meeting at Spring Hill College attended by over five hundred people. Everyone there was concerned about the deteriorated state of our commercial areas. There seemed to be a lack of planning and no vision for the future. There seemed to be a lack of planning and no vision for the future. Overwhelmingly, the consensus was that we all wanted to live in a community we could be proud of and we all believe Spring Hill could be better. In order to move forward, we knew we needed to hire a community planning firm. And since no community in the city of Mobile had ever initiated their own plan, we knew the firm we hired needed to be very well respected and proven. Using funds from a state community planning grant, we hired nationally renowned Dover Colan Partners. A week-long charrette was organized by volunteers involving all the stakeholders, the mayor, all city departments, commercial property owners, developers, merchants and residents. More than six hundred people participated. The result was our master plan, the blueprint for Spring Hill, which was adopted in two thousand and eight by the Planning Commission and the City Council and incorporated into the master plan for the city of Mobile. Every project that the Village of Spring Hill initiates follows the guidelines set forth in this document. Sidewalks were the number one request of Spring Hill residents as well as a key component of the blueprint. The sidewalk projects we have initiated so far have completely transformed our village. We have aggressively pursued highly competitive state grants that require a twenty percent match. The support of the J.L. Bedzell Foundation, private donations and our annual sidewalk-a-thon have been key to acquiring these funds. The sidewalk-a-thon began as a way to get children in the community involved and in five years has raised well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This summer, construction will begin on sidewalks along South McGregor Avenue, being funded through a partnership between the Village of Spring Hill and our two council members Gina Gregory and Joel Davis. Our streetscapes outlined in the blueprint tie everything together. Sidewalks, trees, lights, benches and flowers create a sense of place and define our village. So far, we have planted over three hundred trees, placed twenty distinctive Old Mobile benches and installed forty-seven signature village lights. All these features has been funded with private donations, grants and partnerships between the Village of Spring Hill and property owners. Some examples of these are the Holiday Place before, after. AT&T before, after. Spring Hill College before, after. Service First before, after. And recently, the Baptist Church. Then there are the businesses that took the streetscapes to the next level. It all began with the CBS development in two thousand and eight. This is what the site looked like. This is what was approved to be built. The proposal was completely in conflict with the residents of Spring Hill and the blueprint. We worked with a local architect who donated a neighborhood-friendly plan and we selected the brick, windows and other key features for the development. And after all the dust settled, this first development turned out to be a really great beginning for our village. CBS also agreed to construct the plaza designed by the Village of Spring Hill in front of the development. It has quickly become a popular gathering place and the village center envisioned by our blueprint. To complete the plaza, a new village clock was installed as a result of private fundraising. Next, Regions Bank, before, after. Once the streetscapes in front of the bank was completed, we approached the bank with the idea of turning the underutilized property to the west of the bank into the very first pocket park in the city of Mobile. After fundraising efforts, we were able to construct this beautiful public park on private property for everyone in the city of Mobile to enjoy today. Next, we focused on the Moore Branch of the Mobile Public Library, the second most-used library in the city of Mobile. After securing a grant, we renovated the courtyard and funded surveillance equipment necessary to once again open the front doors of the library, which had been closed to the public for over forty years. Now, the courtyard is being used as it was intended for educational seminars, receptions and children playing with the giant chess set donated through the initiatives of the Village of Spring Hill. We finished off the project by placing the very first public sculpture in Spring Hill, appropriately named The Flame of Knowledge. Lastly, Alabama Power funded and built this decorative wall designed by the Village of Spring Hill to screen their substation located in the heart of the village. We also collaborated with the city and county on two large road infrastructure projects. The first was redesigning the intersection of Old Shell Road and McGregor Avenue to improve the aesthetics and safety of this busy intersection. Large pedestrian islands were installed along with clearly marked wide crosswacks and pedestrian controls making it safer for everyone to cross. Second was the recently completed one point one million dollar roundabout, our largest project to date and also part of our blueprint. The Village of Spring Hill raised money to fund preliminary engineering, design, as well as a feasibility study. Then with the assistance and support of Gina Gregory prioritizing the project within her district, we approached Connie Hudson to submit the project in the County Pay As You Go program for funding. Five years later, not only did we meet all of our objectives, this successful public-private partnership between the city, county and the Village of Spring Hill resulted in the very first roundabout constructed on a public street in the city of Mobile. We would have never been able to accomplish such an aggressive project without the support of Gina and Connie. The Village of Spring Hill is a grassroots success story. In the last ten years, we have initiated, driven and helped fund close to four million dollars in infrastructure improvements for the city of Mobile and our village. These accomplishments have only been possible because of the dedication and hard work of our board members and so many others who have been willing to help give so much to forward our initiatives. It literally takes a village to build one. Thank you for your support in helping us put all these exciting projects on the ground in our community and continuing our efforts to make Mobile a great city to live in.
I just wanna follow up by saying we really could never have done this without the city council and the administration backing what we've done. Fred and Gina are the two original council members ten years ago when we first started and then John came on, you know, quite soon after that. And a lot of what we did were firsts in the city. We pioneered areas that a lot of communities had not done and we got the support from the council and hopefully we're gonna continue to get the support from the council in the next ten years. Maybe somebody else will be standing up here then.
President of the Village of Spring Hill. But thank you very much, thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, the biggest stepping stone, of course, was getting the plan approved and then the optional zoning. So it really does take a long time to rack up these kinds of successes that they have. But it's all because of the community group that Linda is the chair of and all of the volunteers who were here with you. And Linda, you didn't introduce Carolyn and what, you wanna?
Well, one of the things that's really interesting is. Everybody thinks that I'm the only member of the Village of Spring Hill because I'm the one only anyone sees. But we have an amazing team and most of the people who work with me are professionals. And they're all at work except me. But anyway, they're, they're very, very professional and I appreciate so much their willingness to give so much of their time away from their jobs and their families because it really is a labor of love to have the professionalism of these people that work with me every day to forward our initiatives. And with me now are Kimmy Oaks and Carolyn Miller. Carolyn handles all of our website design and e-communications that we do. And anything we write goes through Kimmy because she was a, she was a math teacher, but she should've been an English teacher. Nothing goes out of our organization that she does not read and it's just, everything is very professional and she is, everyone, like I said, has been a joy to have.
And one other thing I just want everybody to know too, if you don't, is that Linda and her group have also mentored other groups in the, in the city that have formed. We have worked with the Peninsula Group, with the Midtown Group and also with John's, I think it was Skyland, with Makita and her group. So Linda and her group have mentored these and helped them write grants. So we want this, this model to continue throughout the city because we found that it's a success story and we want all communities to, to be able to find the kind of success that the Village of Spring Hill has.
Madam President. Yes, I'd like to also say that not only have you mentored other groups who are trying to really duplicate what you all have done up there, but you are, you are inspiring groups to organize. On Thursday night, the Tobinville-Cryton Group, they're gonna form a, they've already formed a five oh one T three and they're gonna focus on redevelopment as you all did. And I'm saying you all, you all were the reason, main reason that they got this inspiration to take on their own community. So we're gonna, they're gonna officially organize themselves Thursday night. We'll probably call on you to come over to share some of your ideas with them. But you all done great work and your work is, your work has begun to spread across the city and as it does, we're all gonna be better off.
Madam.
Mr. Davis, oh, Mr. Manzi.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to echo the comments from Councilman Richardson in District Two. We have a similar initiative that'll be kicked off in about three weeks and I'll certainly be contacting you so that hopefully you can engage with them and provide any opinions or any expertise that you'd like to share with them. We see that the model works and we want to deploy it in District Two.
Thank you. I also would like to commend Linda and Sissy Hungerford and Carolyn and.
Kimmy.
Kimmy. And all the people that work with you for the really remarkable job you've done and the wonderful things you've been able to accomplish over the last ten years. Like my colleagues, I think it's a model of community and neighborhood involvement that can be replicated in other areas of our city. I think our city is stronger when we have organized, productive neighborhoods, when people get together in their neighborhoods and meet each other and get together behind projects. And I, I, I really commend you for that. I look forward to replication of what the Village of Spring Hill has done in all of our neighborhoods across the city because I think we're a much stronger city when we have strong neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda, appreciate it and tell Sissy we missed her today. Thank you, all right. Ms. Lambert.
Resolutions held over. Thirty-seven, three one three, three one four. We're recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine off premises-only license for first stop on Spring Hill Avenue and for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class two package store license for first stop on, package store on Spring Hill Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, three four seven. Authorized contract with Sunset Contracting for Bolton Branch Creek Channel repairs.
So moved.
Second, discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
This is a very important project for certain residents in District Five. We, this is a, this is a big ditch. That part of it, this part we're talking about today runs between University and Azalea Road. There are a number of residents whose yards back up to Bolton's Branch. We had included in this year's capital improvement plan, I think it was about eighty-five thousand dollars to do the engineering to address the crumbling of this, of this stream, the crumbling sides of the stream. We have residents whose backyards are falling into it. We have big gaps, big holes in the ground opening up behind the walls. It's just a big problem. And as I say, we had put about eighty-five thousand dollars in it in this year's capital improvement plan to begin the engineering to fix it. But the rains we had earlier this year showed that we really couldn't wait until next year and we went ahead and kind of borrowed money from next fiscal year's plan in order to address it this, this year. And I wanna thank Nick Amberger and his team for working so hard to get us lined up to, to address these repairs. And I'm very, I'm delighted we can, we can begin to fix this for all these people that back up to it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, three four nine. Authorized contract with Adelty Ports and Maritime for the City of Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal corrective works with the Adelty Seaport Passenger Boarding Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, three fifty, authorized contract amendment to the sole source contract with Lytics Inc. to correct wording.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? All right.
Twenty-one, three fifty-one and three fifty-two. Authorizing contracts with Sexton Lawn and Landscape for core aeration of various athletic playing fields and city parks and with R.E.B.N.L. doing business as True Green to spread lime fertilizer herbicide on various athletic playing fields and city parks.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, three fifty-three. Authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for City of Mobile, Alabama Cruise Terminal mooring hardware remediation design services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thirty-one, three fifty-five. Authorized the city to apply for and receive the TAP grant for sidewalks along Bitten Spur Road.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinances being introduced for the first time, twenty-eight zero twenty-three through sixty-four zero twenty-six.
Motion to suspend the rules for a mere consideration of order six four zero two six and arrest would lay over for one week.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-four zero twenty-six. amend chapter sixty-four point three point one of the city code of, of Mobile, City of Mobile Code Downtown Development District.
Motion to lay over for two weeks.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, zero three three sixty-eight through fifty-eight three fifty-nine.
Motion to suspend the rules for a mere consideration of resolutions zero three three sixty-eight through fifty-eight three five nine.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Zero three three sixty-eight, three sixty-nine and three seventy. Reappointing Harris Oswald and Nicholas Holmes III to the Architectural Review Board and reappointing Carl Butler to the History Museum of Mobile.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-six, three fifty-seven and three fifty-eight designate the corner of Adams and Robbins Streets to Emma Reed Way.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Unless you want me to take them separate, okay. And change the name of Swim Club Road to Winley Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
On three five eight, I just would like to make sure that the community knows that this is a closed neighborhood swim club. There is no one that lives on the street. The gentleman who purchased the property and is now building his home, this is in Amberly neighborhood, is, had requested that his name be given to the street instead of Swim Club Road. So certainly see no harm in that and actually very glad that someone is coming in and redeveloping the property and I don't know if he's keeping the pool or removing the pool, but it's not going to be a city problem and it might have been. So just think this is a good thing.
All right, very good. All right, all in favor, Mr. Manzi?
Yes, ma'am, I wanted to read this information relative to Ms. Emma Reed into the record. Ms. Reed has been a resident in the Lafayette Heights community for over sixty years and due to failing health will have to be moved to an assisted living facility. But she truly is a community fixture. She's lived at a present address for more than fifty-five years, has touched numerous lives in her community and in her career as an educator. Education occupation began at Theodore Junior High School, now M.W. Burrows Elementary School and continued to Funville Elementary. And she served at several other schools. Prior to retiring in nineteen eighty-seven, she was principal at Gorgas and Craighead Elementary Schools. And after retiring, she worked for five years as director of student teachers at the University of South Alabama and then as director of the Head Start Program at Most Pure Heart of Mary. of Mary School. She's a longtime member of Tobinville Warren United Methodist Church and was married for over 50 years to the late Mr. Sammy Reed. And she's served as the secretary of the Lafayette Heights Community Association for more than 17 years. So on next Tuesday at 12:30, we will have this street dedication ceremony in honor, and we're hopefully inviting all of the state officials, or Mr. Mayor, if you're able, would certainly love for you to be there as we pay tribute to Ms. Emma Love Reed.
All right.
Awesome.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Fifty-eight, three-fifty-nine. Authorized removal of weeds group fifteen-thirty-eight.
Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
CIP resolution's being introduced for the first time, twenty-one, three-sixty.
Motion to suspend the rules for media consideration of Resolution 21, three-six-zero.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Twenty-one, three-sixty. Authorized contract with Hagan Storm Fence of Mobile for Crawford Murphy Park Dog Area fencing and site furnishings.
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This project has been one near and dear to the hearts of many residents in this community. Certainly grateful for the leadership exhibited by Ms. Jean Green. Also, we'll be paying tribute to the late Danielle Juzan by naming this dog park in honor at a later council meeting, and we're appreciative of all of the efforts of Ms. Elise Gonan and One Mobile for working with the neighborhood and raising the funds necessary, along with CIP funds, to make this dog park a reality.
All right. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution's being introduced for the first time, zero-nine, three-sixty-one through twenty-one, three-sixty-six.
By Council, Resolutions 09, three-sixty-one through twenty-one, three-sixty-six for lay over for one week.
All right.
Call for public hearing scheduled June 21st, forty-one, three-sixty-seven. Call for public hearing to rezone property at 1111 Short Texas Street, southwest corner of Short Texas Street and South Royal Street, extending to the northwest corner of Texas Street and South Royal Street, extending to the east side of St. Emmanuel Street from I-1 to I-2.
All right. Some move?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Start with Mr. Davis.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Caught you by surprise.
Thank you very much. There will be a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee today at 2 o'clock in the council conference room. This will be designed to discuss the process that we will be following in the, with respect to the 2017 and 2018 capital improvement plan. Again, 2 o'clock at the city council conference room. This coming Monday is Memorial Day. Memorial Day is, was really begun right after the American Civil War, when it was called Decoration Day, and was designed to recognize the sacrifice that the soldiers who fought in the war between the states, especially those who had given their lives, had made. That was changed shortly thereafter to Memorial Day, and it remains a day in which we set aside some time to remember those men and women who have served in our armed forces, and particularly those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to ensure that the liberties that we have today, we continue to enjoy. We, as we look back over the, to the beginning of our republic, what we see throughout is that in times of need, we have had men and women leave their civilian occupations, leave their homes, leave their families, and go and put their lives at risk to preserve our way of government and the liberties we enjoy today. And then, then, when it's over, they return to their civilian occupations and their lives and their families. Their sacrifice, those who have given their lives, and those who showed up in times of need should never be forgotten, and I ask that all of us take some time on Monday to remember them. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mrs. Rich?
Oh, thank you. That's a surprise, too. Appreciate it.
Keeping you all on your toes today.
Yes, and I, too, wish to give everyone a reminder about the Patriotic Concert, which is on Memorial Day at Medal of Honor Park at 7:00 PM. It's a free concert, and hope that people will come out, perhaps picnic, and we're looking forward to that and appreciate that. All volunteer band that comes out and entertains and does a great venue. Again, this will be strictly patriotic music in honor of Memorial Day, which I know is so important to many, many people. And so just would hope that you would come out and join us and be part of that event. And I also wish everyone a safe Memorial weekend, and if you're boating, those gentlemen remind us to wear it and stay safe and enjoy your holiday. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manzi?
Yes, Madam President. I want to echo the comments and sentiments and appreciations articulated by my colleagues. Memorial Day ought to be a day on and not a day off, and recently had an opportunity to fly, and in my period of labor in Atlanta, saw a family who was saying goodbye to a relative who was going off of service. You know, I've seen that on TV and other places, but to be that close and to see that emotion certainly gave me a new appreciation for the sacrifice that Councilman Davis just told us about. So this will be a different kind of Memorial Day for me, and I certainly have a new appreciation for the sacrifice of those who choose to go off and to fight for our way of life. So I am appreciative of that and think we all should be. And then I want to end my comments by just again saying that our colleague, Councilman Small, is certainly in my thoughts and in my prayers. Work very closely with him, and we'll be praying that he will return back to the City of Mobile expeditiously and completely in great health. We'll be praying for his mother, his family, and his staff members. I didn't realize how tight and how close that they were as a family until this incident took place. And so we believe that God is not only here, but he's there in Africa, and that he'll look out for him there. And just want to repeat the offer that I've made, along with Council Vice President Richardson, that if we can be of any assistance to the residents in District 3, only an email, a Facebook message, or a phone call away.
All right. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to, as shortly as I can, not necessarily correct my colleagues, but just clarify something. There's no, in my opinion, happy Memorial Day, and it's not a day to go shopping, but if you choose to do that, you know, please, please do so in a large way. Right before, you take a moment in your own way to remember those who died in service. This is not, this is not Veterans Day all over again. And this is not the day to grab a veteran and say, thanks for your service. This is a day in your own private way, and maybe in a public way, as long as it's not for other purposes. Do something very special, and maybe even visit a family that has lost a loved one in service of our country, in service, not who was a veteran and died, but someone who died serving the country, who, as Mr. Davis pointed out, gave the ultimate sacrifice or made the ultimate sacrifice. This is a very serious day, and maybe in a true sense, a holy day. Those people who have given for our freedoms, something that I can't even fathom, it is sometimes designated on households and on vehicles and on lapel pins, a gold star. We recently had people from all over Alabama and from the region in our city to celebrate two things. One, blue star, which is for those who are sacrificing, in other words, they have servicemen and women that are separated from their families. But we also had a very short ceremony at Battleship Park for gold star families, that is spouses and family members who lost loved ones in service for our country. This is, Monday's their day. Monday's maybe a day that we can think about those who wear the gold star or have the gold star emblem on their vehicle or hanging on a flag in their house. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Richardson.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. I alluded to this earlier. Citizens of the Tobinville and Cryton community will be coming together on Thursday, the 26th, May 26th, at the Faith City Cathedral Church. This church is located on the corner of Mobile Street and Mill Street. It is on the northwest corner, big beautiful church there, in Mobile and Mill Streets. And they're going to be meeting for the purpose of officially organizing a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that will plan the redevelopment and economic development efforts in the Tobinville and Cryton community. I'm asking all the citizens from Cryton and Tobinville who have an interest in participating in planning the development of your community to come to this important meeting. We expect to leave there with officers. I expect them to elect their officers and start the planning, start a set forth mechanism whereby other citizens can join them in planning what they want their community to be. And I would like to join the rest in saying that I'm praying for the speed of recovery and return of Councilman CJ Small, and I would like for the citizens of District 3 to know that District 1 and 2 will see about 3.
That's pretty good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Lastly, we do have several announcements in my district. I have a meeting on Thursday evening with members of the Mobile Terrace Community Development Corporation, just going over some needs that they have in their community. We're also planning a cleanup, so we'll be talking about that. Old Shell work was done this weekend prior to beginning the actual resurfacing. We had a lot of inlets that needed to be repaired before we started on the resurfacing, so they worked on that over the weekend. And if you drive down Old Shell, I mean, not Old Shell Road, but it's close by, University Avenue over by University of South Alabama, you'll see some preliminary work going on. That is getting ready to start some landscaping on the medians all along University and Old Shell Road. The University of South Alabama is partnering with us here at the city, thanks to some capital improvement funds that we set aside for them. They are doing the irrigation work now. They will also do the planting and the maintaining and everything. So that's the kind of partnership mayor that we like to have. Same thing goes for the Mobile Botanical Gardens that the mayor mentioned earlier. That was a partnership, that we actually were able to give them the funds, and they are doing the work. So we get to go out and take advantage of it, but they are actually performing the work out there. We're doing the same thing with the Japanese Gardens. We provided some funding for them, and so they are doing some work themselves out at the Japanese Gardens. So a lot of work going on out in District 7 to really improve the amenities that we have, and hopefully to bring more people out to see, you know, what is available in the western part of the city. Let's see, a couple of other things I want to make sure we all know about, and that is a Public Services Committee meeting will be scheduled. Mr. Richardson will announce that. That's to look at 64-026 regarding the downtown code. And I think that's it for me. Any other announcements from the council or administration at this point? All right. With that, I will move to convene an executive session of the council for the purpose of discussing legal ramifications of and legal options for some pending litigation. The council is in receipt of a letter from our council attorney declaring that the exception allowing an executive session for this purpose is applicable to the planned discussion, and that the executive session is allowable and proper under the Open Meetings Act. So I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The council will not reconvene after this executive session. Thank you.